Thank you. Thank you, yes. Yes, yes. Always thank you. I'm always sorry to get. Beautiful, that's, yeah. That's, uh...
What did he say?
I don't know. I gotta pick my, uh... All this time, I was just... My neck is like, oh, shoulders, my, uh... My nose is hard, my nose is...
Is that the... Ten, eleven, ten, eleven, eleven?
Hello, Ron. How you doing? Hello, Ron.
Where you been, Ron? So, this one? Oh, yeah. Just on the turn, right?
Is it? Yeah. No, it's a...
I don't know. I don't think I've gone on... Uh, who's one? Big family, I should.
Yeah.
It's exactly what... It was working out. Let's just go with that. What it is, what? Seven oh one, George, boy. I don't wanna hear the call from him, no.
He's trying to have that...
The thing of the call is saying, "Please, sir." Seven oh one. And, uh... Andrew, can I ask, like you might... Obviously, it's... I don't know. Now, there is that. It's been, uh... Oh, we don't have to...
Does it tell me how that? Does it not, uh...
Um, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know. No. You don't have a... You don't have a... Um, I guess, I'm just... I don't know. Um, maybe, uh... Oh, that's new. That's new, actually.
That's one.
That's what you...
If you like that.
I mean, I'm just sitting in the car. And I don't know what that's... It's a... Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, okay, so, yeah. It's a twin, dude, and I like it. It has two...
Maybe with your closet?
There is one.
You've got a lot of butters up here, don't you? That's the whole two houses up here. One, two, three, four. Four of them. We have to work hard to get them in the bud.
But we can do this with four people. Uh, I will, I, if, uh... Well, this is the schedule.
We need to hit him.
But that's seven anyway, right? Maybe he'll show up by then.
No, I haven't had seven thirty.
Huh?
I moved in at seven thirty, just like this window.
Oh, okay.
So, so we can handle whatever we wanna do and... 'Cause this, this is not going through. Did you, were you aware that? Forty-one, right there.
It's not gonna happen?
No. No, it's, he, I sent him an email and he responded. It said, "Project will be postponed."
Oh.
So, we're not even gonna see him.
Okay, okay.
Of course, we know about John. And we know about John.
Yeah. Yeah. John, the coolest. You've got John, the coolest. John's a legend.
What about him now? What about this? Is it here?
She's gonna live again.
Again. There's no way we can get out of it. Only there's...
Well, we can, no, I, no way. I just, you don't talk with me about it. And I think there's, I think...
This one, it sounds like making them all...
She's working where it is. Let's, let's draft a, we're done. Do whatever you want.
Push him, ring, come back in my house.
This guy's a bummer. Don't you think so?
Yeah.
Right, then, this is ridiculous.
Go to the group. In the way she changes the things that are going through us.
Hey, Karen, for one, sorry, the pool, that's right. The first time I saw, that's what I got.
I didn't think that. I missed it.
That's why I called you back.
No, that'll do it. Okay. Yeah. We can get rid of him and make him come leave.
Leave that.
Apply, give a, help fix him, show him we're not it.
Yeah.
You think we're not.
Yeah.
Am I going to read it? Um, what? We weren't due, I didn't know that one.
No, I don't think we were.
Yeah, you did, yeah.
Oh, yes, feel good.
Please, sir.
Here he is.
Work through, file that, uh, speakers. How, how would we get?
Okay.
Hi, sir.
Okay, uh... We're ready to start. Please, thank you, Ron. Ready to go, sorry.
Okay, are we on?
Yep. We're already on. Okay. All right. What do you think? Uh, first item on the agenda this evening is approval of the minutes for October eighteenth and any other correspondence that we have. We have a hearing scheduled for seven thirty. Uh, Laura Harris at twenty-one Red Gate Road for an in-law apartment. And we have the continuation of Marion Wade forty-B comprehensive permit scheduled for seven forty-five. Uh, and that is going to be continued. So, we're gonna have a very short evening tonight. So, to begin with, uh... The approval of the, of the minutes. I don't think anybody's had a chance to read them.
Nope.
So, uh... Why don't I, I read, read them and, uh... And put it in the record. Okay. Zoning Board of Appeals, October eighteenth, two thousand twelve minutes. Town Hall Annex thirty-nine, Central Street, Raleigh, Mass. Those present, Dawn Thurston, clerk, uh, clerk Tom Hygrid, uh, companion to Dummer, David Levesque, Michael Doherty, and associate Phil Cressy. Meeting is called to order at seven o'clock. Uh, miscellaneous business, approval of the minutes of September twentieth, two thousand twelve. Levesque motions to accept the minutes of the September twentieth, two thousand twelve meeting. Doherty seconds all members vote in favor. Other business, correspondence. Uh, Thurston reads Michael Doherty's resignation notice and thanks him for his excellent, exemplary service on the board and wishes him continued success in his legal career. Doherty thanks the ZBA for the experience and knowledge he has gained working with the zoning board of appeals. Motion to accept Doherty's letter by Dave Levesque, seconded by Dummer. All voted in favor. The board voted to request that the board of selectmen appoint associate member Phil Cressy to fill full member status and authorize the clerk to prepare for the chairman a letter indicating such desire. Motion by Levesque, seconded by Hygrid. All, all in favor. Public hearing, seven fifteen, one twelve Weatherfield Street. Jan Aljet, applicant for the special permit. Applicant seeks a special permit under section five point four point two to build a garage addition to existing property which encroaches front setback by four feet. Applicant Aljet is present for the hearing. Chairman Thurston reads the application into the record. Board reviews butters list. The applicant explains to board the need to, for an addition is based on being able to provide coverage, electronic lift access to her home for handicapped child. Board reviews the plans submitted and while there is minimal encroachment, the board determines that the design is not more detrimental to the neighborhood and would not create a non-conforming status that jeopardizes neighborhood conditions. Chairman Thurston asks if any butters or other residents have opinions to express them, express, and there were none, as none were present. Dummer makes a motion to grant special permit under, under four, five point four point two and six point one point three point one as submitted, seconded by Levesque. All members voted in favor. Clerk will prepare a decision for signature prior to the next meeting. Continued public hearing. Uh, Tompkins Gestadens Trust, Marion Wade forty-B comprehensive permit, Danielsville. Chairman Thurston reads the letter from the applicant requesting continuance to eleven fifteen, twelve, meeting of board citing need for additional time regarding redesign of water collection systems. Levesque motions, and Dummer seconds, to continue the hearing to two, November fifteen, two thousand twelve. All members vote in favor. Adjournment. Uh, Levesque motions to adjourn. Dummer seconds, all most vote in favor. Meeting adjourned at seven forty-five P.M. Documents provided at the meeting will be available at the ZBA office. Minutes accepted at, uh, tonight, right?
Yes.
Uh... Going to motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the minute. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
All right. It's going on. Oh, yeah.
Okay, uh... All right, we have the letter here. Uh, an email, actually, from hi, Tom Hygrid. Okay, this is in the... In regards to an in-law apartment at forty-one Red Gate Road. Hi, John, you spoke with me and our board chairman, Dawn Thurston, about this at the end of last month concerning your desire to build an in-law apartment above address. With scheduled time from the November agenda for you to bring the application and related materials before the board for an informal review in preparation of a formal public hearing to be scheduled at our December twentieth meeting. Do you intend to submit or have you submitted an application to the board this time? And/or are you planning to attend the meeting with the application in hand? The project has been postponed at this time. Please just let us know. Thanks, Tom.
On, on Wednesday, Mr. Chairman, the, the, uh... Mr. Brown responded with an email indicating that the project had been postponed until spring or summer of next year. So, that's why he had not submitted and will not be submitting until then. So, he won't be, he's not gonna be in front of us. So, I just filled the time into the agenda so in case he was coming, we had him set.
Okay. We have here a notice from the, uh... Board of Selectmen. That the Board of Selectmen has here, uh... September twenty-ninth meeting, uh, in an open session. To accept, uh... To accept the resignation of, uh, Mr. Doherty and to appoint Phil Cressy as full member to the zoning board of appeals. The board voted in. Will appoint Phil Cressy as a full member to the zoning board of appeals until June thirty in two thousand sixteen. And that's signed Robert Snow, chairman of selectmen.
Here's a copy of the letter I submitted to selectmen.
Okay.
As we can see, which one was the original? I'm not sure.
Oh, it's, yeah. You have, you're right.
Yes, and I, ours are sworn in by, uh, some town clerks, I assume.
Okay.
It is, uh, Tuesday. Actually, Wednesday, Tuesday, I received a letter in mail from, uh, Wednesday, we'll take care of that.
I'm picking up a picture, yeah. Okay, uh, this is from Phil Cressy, who's sitting right over here. As this is the practice, when the select, selectmen appoint somebody, he asks the applicants to send a letter with his qualifications and so forth and whatnot. Uh, Phil has been filling in here as associate for, what, past year?
Almost two years now.
Really, it is?
Okay. So, uh, it is, uh... Letter from Phil, the Board of Selectmen. Dear Mr. Snow, I am pleased to be an associate member of the Raleigh zoning board of appeals. It's going to be a loss with my authority. Esquire, resigning from the board due to sale of his home and moving to Western Massachusetts. Upon consideration of current matters of the ZBA and where I am an associate member, I'm willing to fill the remaining full member term of Mr. Doherty's position pending approval by the selectmen. I believe my continuing growing experience on the ZBA would be helpful. It's a big learning curve and each monthly meeting with additional cases brought before the board has heightened my knowledge and experience. Here with the select board, when I was approved to be an associate member, my background, experience in construction, government, and the changing rules and law, laws of zoning construction, forty-B building codes, and just being a good listener, I believe are positive for this position. Although I will not be able to completely fill my shoes as his background as an attorney, it's very helpful to the ZBA and is a regret, regret, regrettable loss. I am confident that I do carry enough experience and knowledge to be a key player on the board. My time on the board has been a good learning experience, but it's challenges and desire to help both resident and commercial enterprises to work through the appeals process so that their project can go forward with the constraints of rule and law. The board has a, has a great attitude, and Dawn, Tom, Nat, and Dave are great people to work with. Whether approved to a full member or not, I will continue to be a positive contributor to the ZBA and do as much as I can to work in the capacity that best of my abilities. Since then, Phil, a Cressy Junior. And he has since been appointed by the board, so... Welcome.
Uh... Mr. Chairman, I might also, perhaps you go on as long as we're talking about new people?
Yeah.
No, uh, no, before you get to that, that's another subject. But I think, this being our first meeting, I think we wanna welcome Lisa Lozzi as the zoning board's new administrative assistant. She comes to us from the town of Topsfield. She has a wealth of experience in the business world, and she is very versed in a lot of subjects that we help on, and we're glad to have her here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes.
We have a letter here from, uh... Mr. Coolwell?
Cruel.
Cool.
Cruel. Cruel.
Cool. Robert Cool.
Cool.
Okay. And he has written this letter to the Board of Selectmen. And regarding the vacancy on the board of appeals. Phil has just been appointed to fill the permanent vacancy, but we have openings for three associates, and at present, we have not. So, uh... This gentleman has requested to, uh, become an associate member. Dear Mr. Snow, it has come to my intention that there is a vacancy in the zoning board of appeals for an associate member. I would appreciate being considered for that vacancy. Briefly, I am a practicing attorney for zoning, particularly as a former member of the Raleigh, Mass. zoning board of appeals. I'm happy to furnish a more complete curriculum and/or meet with your board at your convenience. Thank you for your consideration. Robert Cool. So, uh, he has sent this letter to the selectmen, and let's hope that they appoint him.
Yes. I had occasion to actually meet that gentleman, um, several weeks ago and talk with him about, um, just coincidentally, a totally unrelated matter, and it turns out he's, has a lot of legal experience with zoning boards and done a lot of work. And when I mentioned, when I mentioned to him that I was on the zoning board up here, you know, he sort of asked, as we all would, "You're kidding? I'm on the zoning board?" And he seemed very knowledgeable. I think he seemed like a very nice gentleman, and I think very knowledgeable, would be somebody that I think, you know, we'd be glad to have on board, so hopefully, hopefully we can get him in to talk to us.
Well, I've met him.
You've met him?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, he lives a couple of houses down the street from me.
Yeah, he mentioned, I met, I mentioned your name.
Yeah. Yeah. I was on, there was a crew working across the street, taking down very, very tall trees.
Yeah.
And I was standing there, in his driveway, looking at him, when he came out, and we discussed things back and forth.
Good, good, good.
Okay. Do we have any others, anything else we have to deal with tonight?
Not, not prior. Not that I know of.
Okay. I'm gonna go ahead with the sharing. Everybody is here that I think is gonna come. All right. Uh, before we do that... There is this, this cool, this is like a...
Yeah, well, we can do that.
That's for, yeah, on the end. On the end. Oh, jeez. What's he, what's, another, though?
I don't have it.
Extension. Very last page.
Yeah, okay, there it is. I got it. Okay, um...
Jeez.
Okay, we have a letter from Mr. John J. Kukulas, uh, registered professional engineer. He's the engineer for the forty-B application of, known as Marion Wade. And he's asking for another continuation to December twentieth. Uh, the letter is as follows. Raleigh zoning board of appeals, field box two seventy-five, thirty-nine Central Street, Raleigh, Mass., oh, one nine six nine. Dear zoning board of appeals members, in a previous meeting of the zoning board of appeals, you requested that we submit our plans for review to the Raleigh Conservation Commission. We have been designing a subsurface detention system to meet the stormwater standards of the Mass D B P. We have recently found that because of the large amount of stone required in the design of the system, it has proven un-economical. We therefore have reverted to an open detention pond system, which we will complete in the next few weeks. Time to continue the public hearing for Marion Wade project via December twentieth. Very truly yours, John J. Kukulas. Do I hear a motion to accept his...
So move. Sorry, I can't...
We need discussion on it.
Right?
We keep, we keep going, we, we keep, uh... The law, ball rolling down the hill.
What's this, two years now?
I don't know. I thought it was a shell.
Big white?
Not fine, but shallow.
It's late.
Okay, do I hear a motion to accept, uh, this, uh, letter?
I, thirty, yeah, I worry was, two seconds.
I'm sorry, you made the second.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Please switch.
And it's a long, thorough discussion. All favors, is something saying, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that's when it's accepted and we'll continue that hearing through the twentieth of December.
How long has that been now?
At least two and a half years.
Yeah. Two and a half years.
I would have, you talked about it, right? It's amazing.
Haven't talked about anything that, I mean, answer. I mean, it's been so long, I have to give the wheel, but what would rather you, yeah, I'd have to go through it all over, you know, new plan.
Well, first of all, he gave us one plan, and we worked that one through, through the engine here.
And we started on that one.
And then he said, "You can throw that one away because I'll give you a new one." And he's changed the, uh, we went up to see the driveway, that he, and he showed us just what he's gonna do. He's changed the layout.
Oh, God.
It's a case of stalling, it sounds like, but, yeah.
Okay.
Just an opinion.
Uh...
They are coming back, I think.
We lost half the family.
The what? We lost half our...
Yeah, they're just taking my baby out. Right outside the door, they'll be back in two seconds.
Okay, I'm gonna open the hearing now. Okay. I'm going.
I'm abandoned.
Okay, uh... We have a hearing tonight from, um, Laura Harris at twenty-one Red Gate Road, uh, under section five point four point one, uh, in law apartment. The application is as follows. Laura Harris, David, and Meredith Knight, twenty-one Red Gate Road, Raleigh. Of all properties, Laura Harris, twenty-one Red Gate Road, uh, and, uh... David and Meredith Knight to build in-law apartment in basement of Laura Harris's home. Asking for special permit under section six point six point two of the Raleigh Protector zoning bylaw. The premises and the land and buildings are located at twenty-one Red Gate Road, Raleigh. Assesses map thirty, block, uh, lot number three. It's in the residential section, and there are no overlay, overlaying districts involved. The deed is recorded in Essex South Bridge Street, a deed, book number two seven seven eight three, page two five seven. There has been no variances or special permits granted on this property previously. Description of the proposed work, an in-law apartment in basement, one family, point at twenty-one Red Gate Road, Raleigh. We would like to request permission, reason, a reason, we would like to request permission to finish the basement of my existing house at twenty-one Red Gate Road. It will be used as an in-law apartment for Meredith and David Knight. The space already has two egresses as well as heat, water, and central air and electricity easily available. We would simply like to finish off this already existing space. Signed, Laura Harris. Uh, we have the butters list of four people, and... Another thing right here. And, uh, all the sign-offs are there. The treasurer, white apartment, municipal, white, void. So... Who likes to speak on this?
I guess I will. I'm Laura Harris. It's my house.
Okay.
Your house.
Would you like to know?
Whatever you wanna tell us, whatever you wanna tell us.
We have this existing space in the basement. It's a walkout basement and we just like to finish it for an in-law apartment.
Is, Laurie, is any of what is in the drawing which we have there now? Okay, so, so everything.
I could go over that for you, for that.
That's fine.
Would you please?
Can you identify?
First of all, if I may, give you all a new set of plans.
That's fine.
Yep, here's what I'm gonna do. It's basically the same as the land, original plan that you had. It's just the first plan was taken from the, from the set of plans of the house. The second set of plans isn't as built because of conditions that are there, so I had to just, to revise it a little. That's all. Basically, it's the exact same plan. What we have is right here is a walkout basement and this is, this right here is, is basically a, is, is window, it's a window and door wall already, but what we wanna do, because it's in the basement, we wanna put all doors in there to, just for the ventilation and everything and to let the lighting. We also have, when in doing all of this, we have put in a air exchanger and we will do a lot of lights. These, this adds up to right, right, this area right here. This would be the apartment. We're starting at this door. This is a common area for the family room downstairs for the kids and everything where they're gonna, where they, uh, Mrs. Knight will be babysitting there anyway. Over here is all your, your mechanics. They have, uh, and you'll see these are double doors and they, I've made a path so they get out. There's big tanks, there's all kinds of water purification things. There's just big objects that at some time or other in case of failure you need to get out. So we've, we've done that. We've provided for that so it wouldn't, we wouldn't be taking the house apart to get them out. The original was a bulkhead. We, we are planning on, this, this whole slab is, already has, has radiant heat in it. This bath, you know, they wanna put in, this is their bathroom, they wanna put in for their apartment. And this is their master bedroom, kitchen and living room. This is a family room type thing for the kids to come down. Mrs. Knight will be, takes care of the kids. Is the primary babysitter, I guess so. There, there would be an area, but that's a common area to the thing. This wall here with these doors gives them the privacy of their apartment. And this adds up to approximately seven hundred feet square feet, which is a lot.
Is, is this the full footprint of the existing?
The full footprint of the house, yes, it is.
Okay, you've got, you've got a lot of tanks and purification stuff in this area here.
Yes, there's a lot of, that's all, the whole thing, the whole area is all full of mechanical things for the house.
There's, there's two big tanks downstairs. It's a part of a sprinkler system. So the whole basement is, is all sprinkled out.
And a water purification system because we're on a well. So we have a river soft move system. So we have large tanks over there.
I drove by it the other day. Beautiful spot.
Yeah.
Don't hold the messy guy against us.
Any questions?
Basically, we made it functional.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be doing this?
I hope to.
Well, if we approve of you.
I'll never get a pretty good shot at it.
Do, do we need to consider, I don't have any problem with what they're doing here. It certainly makes sense.
You've got another bathroom in here? Right, uh, what do you, it is, uh, what there is is the one bathroom for the apartment and there's a, like a toilet and sink half bath for the common area for the kids when they come down and that's.
That we'd like to add for our house.
There's nothing there now. We will be putting, everything you see on there, on the right hand side, we will be putting in except for the stairs. They are there. And what, in a wall dividing them.
Okay, so they have. Okay, they have one egress here. And the other is up, up the stairs, right?
Exactly. Well, they have, they have an egress for the bedroom, which is an actual door to go out. They also have three doors to go out of the kitchen if you want, but this, and so, and they also have the, yeah.
Upstairs.
The roof upstairs, yes.
We have a copy of the, of the bylaw. I gotta head, hang on.
Yeah, I have the most, but it doesn't affect, I mean, I have to write them.
The English says I know.
Where does the question go?
I mean, I have six six two. I mean, the only contingencies here are the age of the property. And that the lot is big enough. But this is a five acre lot, so we're gonna have an issue with lots size.
Yeah. This is a nineteen ninety old bylaws.
I don't have any eyes, yeah.
This new one's nineteen ninety?
I have nineteen ninety.
Yeah, I got November two thousand and six.
Yeah, that's what I got.
The newest one. Yeah, I don't see any problem. We can do that one. Six point six point two.
Oh, you're talking about the amended bylaw.
Yeah, this one here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, general requirements.
Yeah, no, that, I don't have it printed out yet.
I have that here.
You do? You have a new one?
Yeah. And there's nothing, uh, six point six, you got an exception. The principal dwelling must be located in the central district, residential district, the outline district, or the coastal conservation district. A lot on which the principal dwelling is located shall comply with the applicant lot area requirement established by section six point one point one. And. You got, you got, you got six points, six point six point two point two. Except as provided by section six point six point two point three point. The apartment shall be complete, shall be a complete housekeeping unit that functions as a separate unit from the principal dwelling. The apartment shall contain a kitchen, shall not have more than one bedroom, and can, and contain one bathroom. The floor area of the apartment may not exceed nine hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is greater. Occupancy of the apartment shall be limited to a maximum of two persons. You wanna read that? That's the new amendment?
Right, yeah.
I was under, when I drew these plans, I was under the assumption that it was seven hundred square feet.
No, you could go to nine.
Yeah, I can go to nine in this, so it's, well, we're right here.
Well, you could go to nine if they're not over twenty-five percent. How large is the house?
It's almost three thousand square feet. Twenty-eight hundred, I think.
So it's counting the basement?
Not counting the basement.
No.
Who is that?
The finished area, the first and second.
Are there, what, so there are two floors on top of this?
It's a cape. It's like a floor and a half.
Yeah.
And the second floor only goes halfway over. It's a log cabin, so it's gonna be drawn half and then.
Sala is part of it, yeah.
Square foot, right?
No, not of the house, no. The house plan is, the sala wasn't included?
No.
No, oh, okay. This is an addition to now.
Okay, okay.
So I would like to add that two hundred square feet, which by just moving the wall with a double door going into the living room, out to the back.
Well, you can't add, if the house, you'd have to demonstrate the house was thirty-six hundred square feet.
Thirty, to make it nine hundred feet? Okay, well, then that's the case what we would have.
Yeah, well, unless you got, unless you, unless you have the ability.
I have the floor plans. I think it's twenty-seven hundred.
Okay, 'cause you're, you're better off.
Not including the basement, just the first and second floors.
Yeah, right. The basement is not considered. It's just we're looking at what your storage is. So if you've got twenty-eight hundred, you could go, you could go seven.
Yes.
You could do that.
How, how long, how long's the building?
Uh, I don't have it with me here. Have you got a scale?
I do have a full floor plan at home. I didn't bring it.
I didn't bring anything.
This is twenty-seven.
House was just built in two thousand and five.
By something.
Yeah, it's thirty.
It's actually, it's inside measurements. It's thirty foot, it's thirty, it's thirty feet four inches like wide. I do know that.
Yeah, that's.
And it's sixty something feet long, probably four or a thing.
Yeah.
What's that come up to?
Well, that's eighteen hundred. That's eighteen hundred per floor, if it's a full floor.
It's not, though.
If you, if you don't have a full floor and a second floor, then it's around twenty-seven. She'd be right, or it'd be right.
So twenty-seven. Uh, so we could go up to nine hundred.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. He can go to twenty-five percent or nine hundred. It's whichever is.
Greater.
Yeah.
Whichever is greater. Whichever is greater, so they can go to the higher amount.
Read it again.
Okay. May not exceed nine hundred square feet or twenty-five percent of the floor area of the principal dwelling, whichever is greater.
I read that to me, I understand that to mean that they can go nine hundred or twenty-five percent. Which means that if it's a, if it's a ten thousand square foot house, you can't go twenty-five percent. You can only go to nine hundred. But if it's a two thousand square foot house, you know, you can't go to nine hundred. You can only go to twenty-five percent, which would be five hundred feet. So as much as the space is there for you to go to nine hundred and they could use, and they could physically do it because they have the space there. I read the bylaw to say that it's twenty-five percent or nine hundred.
Whichever is greater.
If, if you read it as twenty-five percent or greater. Nine hundred square feet is certainly greater. I mean, nine hundred square feet would be greater than twenty-five percent up to, up to, you know, three thousand, up to thirty-six hundred square feet.
This is limited to nine hundred feet. You know, the way that I read it, it is limited to nine hundred feet, no matter how big your house is above. You know, it says they had a four thousand square.
Right, no, nine hundred is the max.
It's the max.
Some square footed, that's why.
That's right, yeah.
Well, if you're comfortable with the nine hundred.
I'm comfortable with the nine hundred. I mean, it's, it's an in-law apartment. It's almost like another affordable housing. You know, the top and an elderly person or whoever and.
Well, it's a cost issue too.
I think that's where we're at.
It's another thing to add two hundred square feet more and build just because you wanna say, "Oh, we can."
This, well, what we do is just incorporate, we'd have to, we'd have to put the bath, he only had one bathroom, so we'd have to put the door. We'd have to, we'd move this, we could move this wall up to here and then they could use this as the, you know, they could just, this is a, you know, a hallway and this part in here will become part of their living room, which will make it big enough so they can take care of the grandchildren and everything. The reason this wall was put here is to, to keep this at, at seven hundred square feet.
Right, right, right. That makes sense.
How much of this area is used for?
Um, all your electrical stuff and this is everything here, your plumbing. It's, it's basically, it's, um.
Quite a bit.
It, it is. It's basically the whole room is used for mechanicals.
It's really not usable, usable space.
No, it's not, not at all.
Not living space, yeah.
Not to, you can put a couple closets in, but you can do that anyway, so.
Okay, I remember inspecting that, that house there, so, you know, there's not much you can do with it.
All right, so you're, you're proposing to move this wall up here?
Yes, to, to accommodate the lot we only have in one bathroom.
Right, yes, yeah. You wanna, have the motion and.
Any problem with that?
Okay.
You like that?
Just maybe, just gotta put it in the motion that we wanna increase it from seven to nine hundred square feet.
That's it.
Do, do we, do, do we wanna require or ask for any more detailed documentation on this? Or is this sufficient? You know, we, this is, this is, this is a nicely drawn drawing, but it's a hand drawing, essentially. I mean, nobody's.
It's just a solo, it's not a structural. It's a building and it's not a structural thing. I don't have any problem with it. I mean, I just.
You're okay?
I mean, we have, we have, we have a copy of the.
Just so you, just, um. I'm not sure. We, we've met before or anything, but I've been building in town with my dad and my family for fifty years now, so.
Don't, don't misunderstand my question.
But then what I've done is I've researched everything that I, that I know of and I couldn't miss something very easily. But I, what I put in there is everything that I think that has to be in there by the law. And also what they, they need is, yes, it's, it's not a complete drawing for, for everything because it's, uh, there's a budget here, so I just.
Cut in, just, I think in Tom's defense, I think he just, he probably wants a plan that when it's filed, it's the exact way you move the wall and everything. Is that what you're looking for, Tom?
Yeah, I, I'm not.
That's not a problem.
I'm not questioning.
We could do that right now just by drawing the line across there and just putting the next step.
Well, as, as, as Dave says, my interest is not to question their needs or your knowledge.
Okay.
Because your knowledge of what needs to be done here will be ultimately worked out with Ken Ward. That, in terms of him granting of the building permit, and since you've done that a lot, you know that. What, what I'm simply looking at from the board's perspective is, at some point in time, none of us will be here, but these documents will be here. And if someone in the future has to refer to these documents, they may wanna know where did they come from? And right now, there's no indication.
And if it's all accepted tonight, you will have, I will, because there's nothing there that's gonna change, I will bring back the drop off, a whole set of copies with this, uh, just like this tonight, with this wall, this wall moved.
Yeah, well, I think minimally we want that. I mean, we just put it as a contingency.
Okay. And one other thing that I like.
So you get your copy.
Right.
The dimension of the house, I'll also have that on it. That's good.
On, on the plan.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, just we moved up while we're continuing on over here. Of course, you're gonna have to have a door minute so we can get on the stairs, so.
It's gonna be the exact same door, this situation because of all the chemicals that we have to move in and out. It, that may have to be moved in and out at a future date.
What's your hope about when to start? I mean, are you trying to get it done, you know?
Probably not till spring.
Spring. Oh, spring, okay, okay.
But they have to sell their house.
Okay, all right, so there's some other transactions that need to transpire. Fine, okay, so you're not anxious to start something next Tuesday?
No.
Okay.
So it actually makes sense if we have a revised plan.
Yeah, if, if, if you're not, if you're not.
That would be in the file.
Yeah, we can do a contingency. Typically, what we would do is, is review the, the. Typically, what we would do is, is review the, the proposal and move to accept and then prepare and draft for signature at our next meeting scheduled, if it happens in December. And that, that's why I was concerned about your schedule, sometimes an applicant says, ooh, builder's coming in next Tuesday. And I have to draft very quickly. But if you guys have time, then we have time to draft the decision and have it for you, and then you'll know you can run with it and do it whenever you want, according to your schedule.
That would be great.
Okay. I don't have any other.
All right, I'll make a motions.
I'll make a motion that the board, um, that the board approve the special permit for the property at, uh, 21 Redgate as submitted, subject to the final modifications of the space showing, with plan showing that there'll be approximately nine hundred square feet. And that the board draft and prepare a approval decision for our December meeting.
All right, now, you wanted that six point.
Six point.
Six point two point two.
Right, under those conditions, exactly.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Very good.
Any discussion?
You can have my warrant, I'll take them back on my name.
Give me the, yes, Barry. No, we need an eye on you.
Hi.
Congratulations on your.
Yes, thanks very much.
Can you have my condolences?
Yeah, yes.
Yo, great, well, this is a good one, but I, we didn't give up anybody.
Okay, sorry.
You know, you know, you know, you know how, you know Barry, Barry gotta start, he, he gotta start in the, in the business, working for, working for his father. And, and his first job was he had to, he had to, uh, tar my foundation when our house unprad.
That was one of them.
Remember that? You remember that?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do.
He hated that, didn't you?
You know something? I love to, I look forward to doing it now, nobody bothers me, you sit there and just do it.
Folks, just so you know, you're welcome, you don't need to be here.
Oh, we don't.
For the following meeting, you know, we're, I mean, you're welcome to, certainly, you can observe, you can watch, but you don't need to be present, we'll, we'll draft, review the decision, make corrections as necessary, you know, sign off on it, you'll get five with the clerk, and then you can get a copy, there'll be a fourteen day, twenty day appeal period, after which, uh, you know, the permit's free and clear to go.
Thank you.
You can watch it on TV.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good holiday.
Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, I will adjourn.
No second, if some.
I'm unofficial.
Did you wanna talk to anybody?
I do.
You did, fine.
You don't wanna call.
We don't wanna close here.
Okay, all set. Shut it down, right?
Shut it down.